You call the meeting to order, Mr. White, or you call the board? President Renesi.
President.
Counselperson Edwards. That is his absent counselperson Farrell. Here. Counselperson Farrell.
Here.
Counselperson Meese.
Here.
Counselperson Charles.
Here.
Counselperson Net.
Present.
Mr. President, do you have a requirement for this evening's meeting? Other persons present this evening include Mayor Jeff Reed, junior counselperson Isabella Holmes, solicitor, Dr. Kravitz, assistant borough manager, Sharon Badman, administrative assistant, Shelley Weaver, Paul Williams, borough manager. I have provided you with a sign-in sheet tonight, and specifically, I want to make note that Mr. Joe Stauffer is here. He has requested time to present to you when that time is appropriate. Let's begin with a moment of silence. Please turn me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council, you have the minutes of the meeting on April 3rd in your packets.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. Any second of that motion.
Not a second.
Any discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
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 Opposed? This brings us to item three on the agenda, government, non-governmental agencies to be heard this evening. I think DHNL is here in Maston. Someone going to present and speak for the fire company?
Is it for your monthly report? It's like your monthly report, the personal report? Shane?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sean Christine. And it looks like we don't have a monthly report tonight, and I understand why. I'm here today to represent the DHNL Firemen's Relief Association with the advice of council. As you may be aware, DHNL Fire Company is a tax-exempt corporation per section 501(c)(4) of the Internal Revenue Code. What you may not be aware of is that pursuant to section 5511 as a nonprofit corporation law of 1988, DHNL Fire Company organized a Don the Soggy and Ladder Firemen's Relief Association as a subunit of the corporation. The Relief Association was established for the purpose of providing volunteer emergency personnel at DHNL with protection from misfortunes suffered as a result of their participation in the fire service. Article two of the association's bylaws state that regular meetings of the association shall be held on the first Wednesday of January, April, July, and October following the regular meeting of the fire company. Article three of the bylaws defines the officers of the association. The president shall preside at all meetings of the association, preserve order, and enforce the laws. The secretary shall keep a true record of the proceedings of every meeting in the minutes. The minutes shall note authorization by the membership of all association financial transactions and all other pertinent business discussed at meetings. The treasurer is responsible for providing the PA auditor general with the association's consistent meetings and bylaws in connection with their audit findings. The treasurer shall keep account of all money belonging to the association and shall not expend monies without authorization from the membership. The treasurer shall, at least on an annual basis, present to the municipality or membership a written financial statement summarizing the financial transactions of the association. Article five of the bylaws states, "All expenditures must be approved by the majority vote at an association meeting and duly recorded in the minutes." Section 7415 of Act 118 requires that minutes of all relief association meetings be maintained to provide a permanent record of its business affairs. Minutes of relief association meetings shall be maintained separately from those of the fire company and should note authorization given by the membership to expand any relief association monies. On January 15th, 2017, a relief association meeting was held immediately after DHNL officers' meeting. At the meeting of the minutes, none were available. Fire company president Dwayne Betzer said he couldn't find the meeting minutes, but he wanted to let everyone know that the minutes were made up anyway. He went on to elaborate that he fabricated the minutes for several relief association meetings because no meetings were actually held. However, he submitted them to the Pennsylvania Auditor General's office as official relief association records. Following the January 15th meeting, DHNL Fire Company Board of Directors reviewed the false minutes of meetings from 2013 to 2016 that were submitted to the auditor general as part of the compliance audit. They included four years of false records for meetings that never took place, recording $173,880 in expenditures that were approved by members that weren't actually at the meetings. On January 24th, the DHNL Fire Company Board of Directors gathered to discuss the matter at hand with fire chief Brandon Ulrich, director Gary Griner, and president Dwayne Betzer. At that meeting, the board was told that was in the past. We just need to move forward and make sure we do it right in the future. When the board informed the members that the infractions could be serious, it was told, "If you think that was the only law broken here, you're kidding yourself." Subsequently, the board of directors notified the PA auditor general of the issue. On January 28th, the board suspended Dwayne Betzer, Don Wire, Gary Griner, and Brandon Ulrich from all administrative functions of the fire company pending the outcome of the hearing. On February 2nd, 2017, the PA auditor general returned to DHNL. Fire Company conducted a second audit. On February 13th, 2017, the fire company held a disciplinary hearing, but at the advice of their legal counsel, the members questioned, refused to answer any questions. During the meeting, the company was dispatched to a motor vehicle accident. At that time, Brian Wetzel and Jeff Schruffler made a motion to lift the suspension of the four individuals. With 10 firefighters out of the room, the motion passed. On April 3rd, 2017, the PA auditor general issued the results of the compliance audit with five findings. One, inadequate relief association bylaws. Two, failure to adhere to relief association bylaws. Three, inadequate minutes of meetings and approvals of financial related business of the relief. Four, insufficient surety on. And five, failure to disclose related party transactions. At the April 10th Fire Company meeting, Fred Ulrich made a motion to cease any action against the involved members, and it passed by 25 to 13. Then he made a motion to remove the entire board of directors that had been investigating the matter. That too passed by 25 to 12 with one extension. Finally, President Dwayne Betzer appointed who he wanted to be board of directors. At this point, you may ask yourself how such motions could be passed, given the circumstances. However, it's not unusual for 20 to 30 social members who don't regularly attend meetings to be brought in as staff of that. This matter has affected the company in many ways. By falsifying records, four individuals have violated multiple rules, stripped the membership of its legal right to direct the expenditure of relief funds, and made apparent that we failed to maintain an appropriate level of transparency. Fire coverage has been jeopardized by firefighters refusing to respond under current leadership. Penn Township has temporarily ceased their contributions to the fire company, and we have been told more actions could be taken by the auditor general office. I leave you with the following headlines. March 20th, 2017, Nazareth, Pennsylvania. Several volunteer firefighters at the vigilance house company walked off the job after the fire department's decision not to revoke the lifetime membership of a firefighter charged with embezzlement. February 16th, 2017, Hellertown, Pennsylvania. 57-year-old John Bate was charged with theft stemming from the pay and stipend he received from the Dewey Fire Company. September 1st, 2016, South Fayette, Pennsylvania. A 60-year-old firefighter who served the Fairview Volunteer Fire Department's treasurer for years was accused of stealing more than $100,000 from the organization. April 1st, 2016, Jim Thorpe, Pennsylvania. The wife of the kid at Township Volunteer Fire Company pleaded guilty to stealing more than $32,000 from the company's relief fund. October 8th, 2014, Coatesville, Pennsylvania. 57-year-old Howard Smith was accused of stealing $300,000 from the Westwood Fire Company over a five-year period. And March 7th, 2017, a former treasurer of the Mohawkic Volunteer Fire Company in White Plains, New York admitted to a $5.6 million embezzlement scheme. Every one of these stories starts with the best intentions of people serving their community and ends with the question, "How was that problem not discovered sooner?" We have found no reason to believe any money is missing from DHNL Fire Company. And I'll say that again. We have no reason to believe any money is missing from DHNL Fire Company. However, considering the falsified official documents, the spending of close to a quarter million dollars without approval, and the attempt to overthrow the board that is handling disciplinary action, the firefighters at DHNL know something has to change. A system that, with entrenched leadership, that discourages transparency, retaliates against discipline, and has fiduciary responsibility, over hundreds of thousands of dollars with insufficient oversight is a potential recipe for disaster. Unfortunately for the borough, a large group of firefighters are saying they've had enough. With what Fred Ulrich referred to as a hostile takeover of the board of directors, it is apparent that the firefighters will not be able to oversee the financial prudence of the fire company. They hereby refer the matter to you, Borough Council, to handle as you see fit.
Members of council, have any questions? Sean, if you mind, for the recording, it's best if you stay here at the microphone. What would you like the council members to do?
That's the step. Honestly, I'm not sure what you should do. Something needs to be done beyond the level of the corporation. We had a fire this Sunday, and two people showed up besides the chiefs. Meanwhile, the fire was basically put out by all neighboring fire companies. We have a room full of firefighters who were, until recently, probably your top numbers as far as responses go, and this year have responded to almost no fire calls. So, there's a, seems to be a problem with the leadership to the point where, as I said, it's so entrenched that it doesn't matter what discipline actually the fire company holds, nothing's going to get done internally. So at this point, you need to be aware of it, and there needs to be some oversight. An audit has been called for and has been arranged for by the board of directors that were in place. With that board of directors no longer being in place, someone needs to make sure that that audit happens. Having sat at that table that you sit at once upon a time, I know I would want to make sure that there's at least some transparency. At this point, I don't believe any, like I said, I don't believe anything's missing or any other laws have been broken other than falsified minutes, but I think it's really up to you guys what you see fit. I can't, I can't really give you too much to offer.
Mr. Farrell.
I started, the phone started coming to my home a while ago, and I quickly contacted Paul, and Paul then contacted our solicitor. Our solicitor, I understand, is also your solicitor. Is that correct?
That's right.
My understanding, when this was brought up last month or the month before, he was going to look into it, and you guys hadn't contacted or reached out to your solicitor at that point when things started going bad. That's my understanding. Maybe I'm wrong. But that's where I thought things were going to, you know, sort of get the solicitor and get people together.
Now, the solicitor represented us during the hearing back in February, right? And again, came in March, and felt that nothing, there was really no business to take care of then. We were waiting on the audits and the continuation of business as usual, and so he wasn't asked to come in April. And then in April, they made the motion and passed it to remove the board of directors.
Could the solicitor step in again and seeing things going and making us aware to a public meeting today to see if something's going to be resolved and see if that can happen? Or are you saying with your fellow firefighters tonight that there is no resolve at this point and you need something from us? We're very limited. I contacted our association, and they said pretty much, you know, it's one of those things where ultimately it comes down to us saying, "Do we want to continue DHNL as our fire company? Or do we send it out and hire another local municipality to do our firefighting?" I just don't want our citizens to be afraid that there is not a fire company out there. And when I talked to one individual, instead, that only one firefighter showed up at a scene, you know, that's when I called Paul. And I think phone calls started coming to Paul as well after that. And that's what my concerns are in the phone calls that I'm getting. And I'm sure you guys are agreeable with that. I understand there's an internal rift going on. I'm just trying to reach out and seeing, you know, what else as a mediator or...
There was a plan afoot about the borough, together with Penn Township, meeting with DHNL, representatives from DHNL to try to work this out. And we were asked for that permission tonight to get a finance committee or another, maybe different committee from the borough, to meet with Penn Township. Because Penn Township has the same concerns as the borough, and I thought the two municipalities working together might provide some leverage to get this thing resolved.
Is that a, is that something to go forward with? Is what our solicitor, your solicitor's, they give a recommendation that we get Penn Township, members of this council together, sit down in the near future, very near future?
Well, I certainly think that's a, you know, any action is a step in the right direction. I think it's going to depend on the outcome. Think that with the leadership in there as it is, you're probably not going to have much success, but other than that, you know, if something can be mediated, that's great. As you said, worst case scenario, the borough takes over the fire company. That's probably something that you don't, the business you don't want to get into, nor does the fire company want you to be in that business. But on the same token, something in between there has to be done. Whether it stays the way it is, goes to that extreme, hopefully something in between will play.
What you've just indicated though is that the other part of this is that the other side's not willing to come partway or, hey, you know, it sounds like you're sort of saying they're not willing to come to the table.
We got to that point where our solicitor was working with their representation to talk about, you know, a course of action, and we, that's why we had felt assured that it was being handled. And we get to the meeting, and, you know, that's what happens.
Can I then ask the solicitor, then, maybe get together with both, I don't know what they would be called now at this point, both sides? See if there's a timeframe that they can get together?
That's what we're going to get together with Penn Township, because they're not going to send any money their way.
I understand that, but we have to get this thing resolved and everything, so that you can get those individuals that need to be at that meeting to get there and sort of hash this whole thing out and go from there and see if we can get a resolve as quickly as possible. Not only for your funding, but I'm just saying for the residents of the borough.
Well, you get to a situation where you have an industrial fire in the borough, which we had on Sunday, and you have two firefighters show up. You have to wonder, is it worth it?
Well, I just, I just want to put my two cents in, fellas. I know things might not be going very well for you, but please, consider the residents of the borough and that, you know, I know a sick out, if I would call it, a sick out, not showing up for firefighting at this present time. I would ask you to respond and set your differences aside and tell me if we can get this meeting and get a resolve, if we can get a resolve. Okay? That's what I'm asking you guys to do. And I would tell the other parties, if they were here, the same thing, that we have to consider the residents first, and then let's get this other thing taken care of on the side. I've spoken, I know there was another hand out there.
Yep, keep finding.
Sean first, but I think we welcome your visit here today. Firefighters are our first responders. You are our local heroes. We need you. You serve us, your family, your friends, your neighbors. My life as a lawyer, I can't remove that from my thick game process. I've represented and been involved in nonprofit organizations for decades. And while the tax-free nature under the tax code gives you a 501(c)(4), that's simply how you get taxed. The law is in the state statute, the nonprofit corporation law, and that says that the bylaws govern. You have to follow the bylaws, and if people don't follow the bylaws, then there may be recourse under the statute, but I think it takes you to a court. All that does is postpone the ultimate resolution of that. Makes it more costly, feelings get even worse, like that when you're in court. And so, it's one of the reasons why I welcome the visit. And so, I think what this council wants to do is help to not be the mediator, but help to facilitate the getting together of the parties to have a discussion about what we need to do to provide the protection that the community deserves and to recognize what the issues have been and get them resolved. So, I'm not exactly sure what Paul is saying, because it sounds he got a foot in both camps, so maybe that's, I'm not sure if that's a problem.
Oh, right now, their camp is on the losing side, given the end run they did in April, because they followed parliamentary procedure there.
Okay, so, am I seeing it clearly that the next step is that we're going to attempt to prosecute the lead person to get a meeting together of the parties?
And Penn Township.
And Penn Township, to discuss it further. Does that suit your needs for the day?
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Members of council, in your minutes, in your packet, grabbing of the minutes of the meeting of sales for the projects from this March meeting, I'm not sure if you were reacting as I did, reading the minutes of how many terrific things are going on in the borough of Seals Grove, where suppliers created it, run it, and helping to do even more, but that, those minutes are quite impressive. We also have in our packets from the Seals Grove area Chamber of Commerce. They were scheduled for the meeting, I'm sorry, the minutes that was held here in April. I was out of town, so I went to attend that. Brings us to the Seals Grove renovation, the Seals Grove pool. Mr. Reese, have any comments?
The only thing I'd just like to say, because we're going to be open pretty soon, our renovation project that's going on in the bathhouses is about 80% done, should be finalized this week. We will be open Memorial Day weekend with Memorial Day itself being free to the public, and then we will open full-time on the last day of school, which at this point is June 2nd, like Friday, and then we'll be open the whole season. We'll be ready.
Parks and Recreation, I can see it's Megan Loeb here tonight.
Megan Loeb is not here. You accepted her reservation last week.
Yes, we read it the last meeting. And due to every location. They did meet this last Tuesday. They did not reorganize with Megan being the former chairman, but we did have a volunteer to take and record minutes, and that'd be Michaeline Schuman. It was a call I'm present of what you have in your packet tonight. They last week approved the minutes from February. But I'd like to report on an activity this coming weekend. There's going to be a, two days of work scheduled at the dog park by users of the dog park and anyone else that would like to help out. So that's May 6th and May 7th. The time is 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon.
Do they bring any tools?
Yes.
Do we have any tools? Next on this is Penn Millie Airport. Mr. Edwards is on present to give the report about that tonight. Brings us to junior councilperson Izzy Knowles. Do you have anything you'd like to bring to the...
No report for tonight.
Thank you. Next is Bill Siegel from Cedar Collar.
Mr. President, I'll surrender my time to my esteemed colleague, Terry Provost, and she'll address both agenda items.
You need to get more age. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, council. First, I am going to address the council's budget revision for Seals Grove. That budget revision is for community development grant funding that we would like to move from the curb cut reconstruction upgrade project from 2015, move about $17,000 or exactly $17,000 in even numbers from the curb cut reconstruction upgrade project to the private sidewalk curb replacement project. That would, after council, or if you have any questions after that, if you would approve that, then it will go to the county for final consideration tomorrow.
Are members of council, I understand you would like to ask any questions about this movement of funds from curb cuts to private sidewalk replacement? I think this would require a motion of the council to...
I'll make the motion.
Move, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm second. Any further discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. And the next item, I might need some Bill Siegel expertise, but what I have in front of you in your packet that was put together, there is recommendations for the flood resiliency task force. As you know, I believe it was late last year, we came in front of council to ask to move forward with the Appalachian Regional Commission funding to pilot the flood resiliency right here in Seals Grove. We're going to replicate that in five more communities. In Seals Grove, we did have some bumps. We had two public meetings, one during the day, not so well attended, but it wasn't here Christmas, and one in the evening as well. The one in the evening was very well received. From that public meeting, there was a lot of education. We had survey results as well. They have been provided for our staff. We're seeing here in Seals Grove, about a third of the response, how people respond to the survey. We saw about 90% of the homes in the floodplain are older than 50 years old. We've had about $1 million worth of claims for flood insurance. Their number one priority here in the borough would be to elevate homes. And I think you have that here, unlike most other places we're working in, because they've seen it happen and they know what kind of, how much it mitigates the risk. On the Isle of Q, the houses that aren't elevated look a little odd now. So, I think that's where you're seeing all of these survey results coming and saying, "Do you really want to elevate our home?" I would say that's about 20% of your response, which is quite high. So, getting into the meat of all this, we had a couple of working groups. We met and talked about NFIP insurance. We also talked about banking, local banking. We've learned a lot of things, and we want to take these initiatives to a task force. And with that, we have recommended task force members. They are in your packet. They have all been notified via mailing, which was CC to borough staff as well, to join on this borough task force per council designation. We have had, nobody contacted me to say, "Oh, no, we don't want to do that." Most of these folks attended the working groups. They were very interesting. We had quite the synergy. Those members are on the list you have. I believe it's the top portion of that list that we would ask to be recommended.
Well, then I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to appoint these people. Hopefully we have their consent.
Yes, they've all been notified. I've heard nothing negative from any of those folks.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question? I see you've got two realty companies on there, but none represented from Bowden Agency. Is that because they chose not to participate, or were they not contacted?
I know Deb Fox from Villager. I may not know the other person you are speaking about.
No, I'm saying they're not there. They're not Bowden Agency, a realty company?
Right.
You have, you have two, Chris Caldwell from State Farm and Deb Fox from Bowser Realty.
State Farm is not a realty, as far as I understand.
I'm sorry, it's an insurance company. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one estate.
It's okay. You still have the question, though.
Yeah, but was Bowden Agency, okay, by any chance as well?
The only folks who were contacted through this whole initiative were folks who reside in the floodplain. were folks who reside in the floodplain or working group facilitators. So if Bowman is not in the floodplain, they may have not had the opportunity.
But it was an advertised meeting.
It was advertised, correct. Was.
Motion to accept the B1 of the task force.
If motion, is there a second? I'll second. Discussion on the motion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. That's all I have. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on our list, I'm Chad Smith from Central Keystone Council Government.
Good evening. I apologize, I have a couple handouts here. I've been in contact with Paul. My name's Chad Smith. I'm the semi-newly appointed director of the Central Keystone Council Governments, replacing Tom Sowers, who started the initiative back in 2002. Currently, we represent five counties, thirty-eight municipalities. We provide building, third-party building inspection services, property maintenance, and zoning services, depending on the municipality needs and desire. Each year, we have a member municipalities appointing a representative to our board. We have an annual meeting. And recognizing that sometimes the appointees may not be elected officials or boards change over time, I'm taking this opportunity just to get out and say hello and give you a name with a, or face with a name, I guess, and potentially answer any questions you may have or take back with me or let you know that we're not robots and we're not simply out there writing violations that, you know, we do care about our communities. And, you know, anything you may ever need or question, please let us know. We improve our services every day and that's what we like to do. Giving to you just a quick summary. The initial sheet that has a pretty better head is a review of the building permits issued here in Sealsgrove for 2016 and 2017 to date. Down a little bit, but of course, you know, it is just April. So I'm very cautious. The second form that you have is just an overall summary of the rental inspection program we're doing here. And the two highlighted areas I'm somewhat pleased with, it's to be expected, I believe the COGS started providing rental inspections back in thirteen, 2013, 14. As you can see, our inspectors were out and we found a hundred sixty-five, you know, or failed a hundred sixty-five units for light fire safety issues, missing smoke detectors, things like that. Our most recent go-around with Precinct One only found thirty-six. To me, that certainly shows the program's working. And I would rest assured, you know, your renters and tenants are much safer. And this is certainly no reflection on landlords. We know how bad this could be and tend to remove smoke detectors when things get out or parties get out of hand. But I think all in all, it's really.
I brought this up before and I'm glad the DHL gentlemen or ladies are still here. Has, from the fire DHL side, do you guys come across or do you check when you go to fires about smoke detectors? Is that something that you normally do, being fire chiefs, or does that fall down to firefighters or whatever? I've been harping about getting in touch with Chris Kinnellwell. I understand he has, at other school districts, out of our school districts, has given away free detectors and firefighters have volunteered to install them for senior citizens, things like that. Has that ever come about or has anybody ever approached or done anything like that for us here in the borough?
We get, we get fire extinguishers every year from WAP and say our AIC they owe them to the public and come gather when I'm at one.
How's that publicized out?
Operation Save a Life, that WAP does, which basically an open invite, they'll be able to fire department, become fire, start checking, I'm sorry.
Well, I ask you, because we do newsletters. Hopefully they're reaching you guys up to fire company. If you would, or maybe we can get a contact person when we say we're getting ready to do a newsletter to maybe put something more in there just so our residents can see that if they miss Channel 16 and an announcement that we get that worded out. That's something I just want to pitch out because I've been trying to set out for years. And, you know, make sure that our area is covered by that, our residents. Thank you.
That's a very good point. And we're actually working on, if you're familiar with how, of course, you know, you are with ordinances of the fifteen books and CDBG and Cedar Cog and CK Cog and zoning and building and property. We're trying to blend all of that into one code book. And we're investigating and trying to create right now a fire safety inspection program where we would be bringing to Sealsgrove Borough, any that you wish, it's an additional service, where you have trained staff who will go out to commercial development at this point, check for smoke alarms, check for fire extinguishers, egress. We just see it as a good, good PR as well as the public safety offer. We've had examples where part of the Uniform Construction Code, when they review certain building sizes that require sprinklers, alarms, what have you. Once they get their certificate of occupancy, there's no one there to check it. There's no one there to follow up. We've actually had monitoring companies call us and say, hey, such-and-such has dropped their services. What do you want us to do? There's really nothing we can do. They met the parameters to get their CO. What do you do after? We have a school district, yours, for real. But had a fire and we realized that the monitoring system was not up to date and it did not report to the fire department. Fortunately, someone was on scene and called 911, but the system itself had malfunctioned and was not working. So we see a need for that. It would certainly be an option. But we certainly would like to see that. We've been working, we've talked with Wayne Cameron. They want to get out to the other fire departments. I think you had like a courtesy review with commercial? And you would go in and do your general?
We've seen walkthroughs of businesses and stuff like that. If we find something that they weren't there, we pointed out, you know, we just did one by by legacy. And actually, we just finally found one where they went on with their establishment.
And the nice, hopeful thing in working directly hand-in-hand with them is when they respond to a fire, then seeing a sticker in the window or something tells them they should be able to expect doors are open, egress is clear. And even, I think they wanted to go as far as the roof construction so you know what you're running into if you have to breathe.
I believe it was more broken than that. Yeah, and then give us a job title for the roof.
So that's, we're probably halfway through it and of course you have to run through it more. But again, just an example of we're constantly trying to strive to give you better service and improve the model.
Question, you mentioned the various code books that you have. You've tried to make them into one, similarly, one very large book. How's that work?
I should, I should restate that. With our property maintenance department. Right now, the most are functioning off the International Property Maintenance Code, which is part of the Uniform Construction Code. That's a very thin one. We also have, you know, your residential rental inspection ordinance and potentially this fire safety inspection. So no, it would not be that thick. And then they'll be opted. It's not accept the code or not. It'll be, we want this, we want this. It's sort of, it's an opportunity for one-stop shopping, but you're certainly shopping and choose what you wish.
Questions of council? Someone on the floor?
Just two real quick questions. First one is, are you required to have a fence around your in-ground pool? Is that part of the building code?
To my knowledge, yes.
Awesome. And the second question is, Susquehanna University's in Precinct One. I was wondering whether or not you've found any infractions on campus? Like are, are our student residents being housed in this very strict and costly process? Like are they being housed in as safe of an environment?
They are all inspected to the same quality and standard.
Yeah, but in your inspections, did you find any?
I will turn this to Rebecca. I would love to sound super intelligent because she just educated me this morning on, Sealsgrove broken into three precincts, of which Susquehanna falls into precinct.
Most of Susquehanna falls into Precinct One.
But they haven't.
So we took Susquehanna and split it into three. So they are all inspected on the same three-year cycle and are held to the same standards. And we don't normally find anything in the dorms, in the fraternities. Normally, it's some of the off-campus housing that, you know, the older kids are living in.
Well, there's none of them now. They're all living on campus.
Over at Pine Meadows, what used to be Pine Meadows.
Okay, so there are violations in there?
Um, there hasn't been any life safety violations. There's been, you know, things, kids blocking windows so that, you know, the egress is closed. They put cardboard in the window because they want to sleep late or things like that.
No more than four people staying in a room in any given apartment or dormitory?
Yeah, that's all things that they look at. They look at the occupancy. They take an employee.
No more than four?
They take an employee. It depends on the unit. It depends on the unit. Because all have, they all have different occupancy, what they were constructed to or what they're allowed for.
But the rental ordinance says that you're not allowed to have more than four people. So I, I mean, I turned that back over to council to figure out where the discrepancy between the on-campus housing and the off-campus housing is.
Which, which housing we're talking about here. Dormitories, of course, they don't count. They're occupancy thirty-seven, so, or.
Right, so I'm turning that back over to council to figure out where the discrepancy between the market rental units and the on-campus rental units, quite a bit more expensive.
If I could address that. Mr. Stewes, I wish you would have asked how many landlords in town got the inspection and which ones didn't. So the universities comply with the inspection since the inception. Every student at Susquehanna sleeps in a sprinkler room. Is that the case for off-campus apartments?
Does it matter?
I don't know if this matters to you. It seems to only matter to you.
No, actually, I'm more concerned whether or not the on-campus housing, which is significantly more expensive than the off-campus housing and the students are forced to purchase, is not held to the same standard as the market-based occupancy that they could find at a significantly lower rate and under standards for which they may choose to purchase or not purchase. You're forcing them to purchase a sprinkler system. But I don't want to get in the back and forth with you.
Did anybody talk to the fire company about when you and Sean Christine used the fire police vehicle?
I've never used the fire police vehicle.
To go and talk to our students?
I've never used the fire police vehicle. I've never used the fire police vehicle. Can't speak for other people. But like I said, I'm not going to get in a tit-for-tat with you because you're not trustworthy. So I'll let it back over to council.
All right. Well, I'd like to, you have something for Rebecca because I just wanted to.
I just wanted to introduce. This is Rebecca, council. She is our assistant for the property maintenance and rental department. She, without her, I think we all would probably need to lost.
I know the numbers, I avoid the people. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Stewes, can I ask, I'd like to say something about his updated website.
Uh-huh.
Website.
One of the, the first things I tackled was our website, which is www.CKCOG.com. I found our original not to be very user-friendly. If you certainly knew construction or knew exactly what you were looking for, you could get in and the information was there. It's now very user-friendly. First thing you'll come upon is a button that says, what do you want to do? You know, is build a fence or add it in addition or new construction? And then it walks you through the steps that you need to go through, starting with you'll need zoning, whether it be through us or through the appropriate municipal zoning officer, down through coming to the Cog for the building codes or certificates, and then depending on what it is. Highly recommend, please send everyone to that. If they can't get in touch with us, we are always available. I think we have a phone tree because we have such unique departments and I can't stand it. But certainly email, anything you need.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Good luck. This brings us to the part of the agenda where other persons from the public may be heard. There's a five-minute limit on the amount of our time it may take tonight. If you need more time, we will have a second comment period at the end of the meeting so we can finish then. Mr. Stauffer, I see you're here. Did you wish to be here tonight?
Yes, please move forward. I'll keep it within the five minutes, but thank you and good evening. For those who may not remember me, I was here December, I'm here December meeting, December 5th, regarding a sewer overbilling error. And at that point, I had requested a credit that Borough Council would provide a credit for the overpayment. Since that time, Borough Council has granted a motion to provide a fifty percent credit for our overpayment. And I thank you for providing at least a fifty percent. The reason I'm here this evening is because of that credit I understood through our office communicating with Borough Manager Mr. Williams, was that that credit was refused to be transferred to another property or to our home purchaser because we do have a particular home at 314 South Market Street, the address, under contract for sale and it's intended to be closed this week. So the credit that you all have granted, the fifty percent overpayment, would be lost if it were not treated in like manner as unpaid bills would be lenable and would follow the land. And we respectfully ask you to grant a motion that credits should follow the land as well. So we ask that you provide, that the credit can follow the land and go on to our purchaser property. That's all I have.
I'd like to first ask our solicitor if this request is something that the council can.
Under normal circumstances, if there's a back bill that hasn't been paid, the lien, the lien on the property would follow. The property would not go after the landowner once he sold it. So applying the same analogy to the credit, I see no reason why a credit wouldn't follow the property and apply to this situation. Otherwise, our other choice would be to give Mr. Stauffer a check for his credit and say, thank you very much for your past payments. And here goes your check. But he's willing to take the credit to be passed on with the property, so we're going to put up the cash.
Questions from the council members?
I make a motion that we approve passing the credit on to the property, Mr. Stauffer.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
Were there discussion on this motion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to extend the extension tonight. Have a business relationship with Mr. Stauffer. Others in attendance who wish to be here this evening? If not, we'll move to committee, commission, and board reports beginning with Mr. Charles, Finance and Budget Committee.
Finance Committee met today at one o'clock, would review all the bills and there was nothing I'd drawn on when I make a motion. Pay the bills as presented.
Is there a second to the motion? Roger, second?
Yes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries?
The second item is the taxes and arations that there are none for this month. The next item is the beyond that request from Kids Grove for twenty-five thousand dollars that had been presented last month. And we asked that it be deferred. And three council members attended the Kids Grove Board Meeting. It was very productive and informative. And I make a motion that we approve the request for the twenty-five thousand dollars towards the total project. If it is revised or scaled back, they must come back for approval and we pay directly to the vendors.
I'll second that motion.
Second. For those who are here, the one we're talking about, there's a major project at Kids Grove to make it more handicap accessible to make it more handicap accessible so that wheelchair, kids with rollers, wheelchairs of all sorts may make better use of it. I think imagine it as a surface, kind of like the track around Seale's Grove High School and around the university's track. Are you ready for the motion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Uh, the last item is to award the street, uh, the street program bids. The bids came in, and if you look on the orange sheet, HRI is the apparent low bidder. And I make a motion to award the bid to HRI, the apparent low bidder, for the base bid and add alternate one, and include add alternate two if UGI agrees to pay for add alternate two. The add alternate two are the streets where UGI has done the major cutting, and they're in the process of reviewing this.
So the base bid with the alt...
Add alternate one.
Is three hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that's it from the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Public Facilities and Services, Mr. Hendricks is not here. I'd ask Mr. Webb, is there anything to report there?
There is not, no.
Borough Administration, Property Equipment, Mr. Carroll.
No report.
Community Activities and Public Affairs, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, I have, I have a few requests here. First one is for Susquehanna to hang the graduation banners above Market Street. This was pre-approved in January. I would make the motion that we accept this request.
Second. Would you second it? Discussion? All in favor of the motion, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Second one I have here is for the Memorial Day festivals and parades, which has also been pre-approved in January. I make the motion that we accept this request.
Second. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Um, there's a couple other I have here. One was just handed to me this evening. This is to close University Avenue for the Antiques on the Avenue Show, which is Sunday, July the ninth, from five AM to five PM. This also has been pre-approved in January. It is an annual event. I make the motion that we approve this closure.
Second. Would you second it? Discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have one more. We don't have any paperwork on it. Oh, you do. I don't.
No.
It's a request from the Farmers Market, which is on here at the Commons, on Saturday mornings through the summertime, and they're requesting to be able to block off and utilize the, brick area here of Union Alley, leaving Bionnet Way open so that the people that live on Market Street need to enter in the back will have access to there. This, this is a huge safety factor for the citizens. You know, they're going to set up, there's a lot of kids and people walking through this area, so not having traffic in there is a wise decision. So I make a motion that we accept the closure of Union Alley between Pine Street and the edge of the brick for the Farmers Market.
Second. Discussion on the motion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Personal Management Committee, there's been a report there. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Niff?
No report.
So the Hearing Board?
No report.
And Planning Commission?
Same, nothing to report.
Civil Service Commission, there's no report there?
Correct.
Shade Tree Commission, in your packet, you do have minutes of their April twentieth meeting, green sheets. And you saw there perfectly colored green sheets as you were trying to green them. Now bring us to Borough Administration reports, are you ready?
Can I make a comment? The Shade Tree Commission just had their spring planting that was successfully completed. They had a number of volunteers. I want to thank Shane Hendricks for being present to read the proclamation. I understand that we will be offline for the tenth consecutive year as a tree city, USA. And the second item, not listed on your agenda, but was included on your places this evening, is a recommendation to have Borough Council consider an appointment to, to a vacancy on the Shade Tree Commission. And the name is Robert Greyston. Robert Greyston owns a residential property in the borough as well as other non-residential properties in the borough. With, with the understanding that the, uh, the appointments to the Shade Tree Commission are supposed to be resident, residents. And this residential property that Mr. Greyston has, I would say is probably a seasonal resident, residence. He's interested. He certainly is qualified. I, I have only just begun to get to know Mr. Greyston. I understand for probably the past twenty-five years, he has been not solely responsible, but a major player in the Philadelphia International Flower Show exhibit. And I think he would be an asset if he would consider resident, the definition of resident. I understand that there is precedent, previous precedent in the borough, that you, you have considered applicants that they do in fact own property and they are offering to serve on a board commission such as this, like in an advisory role.
Question?
Oh, is there...
He wants to serve the issue, no?
Well, no, I... There's no issue.
No.
I move that we appoint Robert Greyston.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Would you second the discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, that would be a good choice. Now I think we're ready for a fair reading.
I want to thank all for allowing, allowing Shane to read the Memorial Day proclamation since I was out of town last weekend. In addition, Paul, what he has, the yellow monthly report, I think I knew.
Any questions for the mayor? I thought that brings us to the Borough Solicitor, Mr. Kravitz.
I don't know if anybody else has kept the brief executive session, discussed the obligation of the government's one.
We do that to organize meetings.
Bring us to Borough Engineering. In the packets, we have updates on pending projects from Mr. Kukart. There was nothing to report with Larson Design Group. There is an update on the CBBG home elevation project. That was in your copy list.
If there are no questions on those matters, it brings us to Borough Treasurer, Sharon Badman.
Everybody has a copy of their April progress report if you have any questions.
I make a motion that we approve as presented. Second that.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any...
Thank you.
Bring us to Borough Manager, Secretary, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Niski. The Public Works Department on two days in April, April ten, eleven, they performed the curbside spring cleanup throughout the borough. I have not heard tonnage yet. It, it sometimes is quite amazing when they provide the tonnage by the number of men that participate in this activity, what, what they actually dispose of as a service, as a service to the residents. They go home quite exhausted at the end of that activity. Shuri, I just want to say, I attended a meeting in my absence on a particular day in April to review the flood inundation map. And this, this map is being put together by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and it was being held at the nine-one-one center. And this is the second meeting of its kind to review some of the more recent data that was collected as a result of tropical storm leak. And the purpose of this mapping at the present time is actually for emergency management. However, I, I think it is very likely that, once it is produced and accepted, that this in fact could become considered by FEMA to become the next officially adopted firm map. So I don't see why it wouldn't be. It's data that, that should be considered. Participants on behalf of the borough at the first meeting included Janet Powers and Jim Charles. And at the second meeting, unfortunately, they were not able to attend. But Mrs. Badman has also experience with a floodfront property as well. April twenty-first, we had a number, I think it was seven persons from the Target Store, and then one independent contractor participate in the United Way Day of Action. Walt Nichols oversaw them. They applied a coat of paint, exterior paint, to the Little Norway Tube Building. Lunch was furnished. We took advantage of a gift card from the Wise Market as, as a friend to this activity. Earlier this month, I attended a disaster risk reduction ambassador seminar that was held at FEMA. And I am hoping that, in working in conjunction with C. DeCoggan, Declarator, and Bill, that some of this information can be used by the Steering Committee Task Force that you appointed this evening. It is honestly all about resiliency and making sure that there is a town of Seale's Grove in the end of the future.
Any other questions they have?
I have a question regarding the, uh, the meeting as far as the data regarding floods on there. Are you finding that they're going to raise the, uh, the floods on the map from what it currently is?
That, that is quite possible. In fact, I want to say yes. And there is data available as we speak that's called best available data or best available information. It's, it's published. It has been adopted. Municipals have the option of making it enforceable. But as of the time being, it is the firm map that is the lawful flood zone. However, the borough, when it does review elevation projects as we are, we make sure that the design engineer is, is aware of the best available data and strongly recommend that they ought to make use of it. You see that our present requirements, you have to have the base floor elevation at a certain elevation, and we have a freeboard that you also must meet, and that is eighteen inches. It is estimated that the adjusted flood plane is going to change by that eighteen inches, if not slightly more, because I've heard a higher number in the community just north of us, which is called Shade Nook. I've heard that that can be actually greater than twenty inches.
Twenty inches above what it currently is. So then you'd still have to be eighteen inches above that also. So, so the people that, the people that, uh, elevated their home before could possibly be no longer...
They might lose their freeboard.
No more, no more complying.
Yes.
The ones that complied before, before were good now.
So, yeah.
Well, that's a way to go. It's unfortunate.
Mr. Carroll?
Bill, I, two months ago, I saw that they said they were going to come out filing in two thousand and eighteen. But that, in that, did you get information on that, or?
There have been lots of promises in lots of communities about when the best available data will become the flood insurance rate map. It's not definitive, but I would agree with the Borough Manager that the best available data documents that you're seeing circulated will in fact, at some point in time, be the flood insurance rate map. The one, the one thing to point out is it will vary across the geography. So it might be eighteen inches at one point. It might be six, or twelve, or twenty-two, or twenty-four. It will vary based on data that was collected on the geography and the topography.
Mr. Niski, further, I'd like to report on the lavender or lilac color sheet that was handed out. I did attend the Greater Susquehann Valley Chamber of Commerce Transportation Committee meeting, and that was held Friday, April fourteenth. And what I'd just like to share with you is that I think some of you either have knowledge or read about the Ash Basins and as it relates to the Susquehann Valley Three Way Project, that it's been compared to having the consistency of toothpaste or something similar to that. So PNDOT is having to look at alternative alignments. And upcoming public meetings, they anticipate for late May or early June with a preferred alignment being identified in the fall of two thousand and seventeen. Furthermore, there's a need to update the traffic studies for the tie-in to the Route sixty-one connector. There was other information reported on that particular day, and that's on the flip side. And I know the legislators may be taking up this issue perhaps this year. I know it's come up on the ears during our sessions about funding a Pennsylvania State Police. This was the handout that was just provided that day for information purposes. Fred Keller was also present at that Friday morning meeting. And it's also this time, if I can mention this, what Fred had said, that he sees a fair and equitable way of allocating costs to those municipalities that do not have police service. He's not ready to commit to just taxation of those residents in those communities that do not have police protection. But I'm sure you'll hear more about this in the future. So this handout is just rear information.
Question? Here, Mr. Carroll. Um, I, I caught a part of it, and I don't know if anybody else heard, about the bypass and what have you. They said that there was a meeting coming up very shortly at the municipal about setting up or at least a plan to go forward. So did you hear anything more about that? It came out on WKOK part of it today.
Wow.
Yeah. I just took on it.
The, the project is divided in north and south.
Right, and then we talked about the south part. There's going to be a meeting at the municipal.
According to this, it's, it's late May or early June.
Yeah, maybe that's what it's going to be then, okay.
And is my understanding correct that the change that will be required because of this discovery of the Ash would take place in the Shmoke and Dam and north of that area rather than at our end?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Any else, Mr. Williams? That's all. Thank you.
Oh, Paul, on my report also, I'm sorry, Mr. Niski. The PSCD Annual Conference is made seven through ten, and per sheet. If anyone's interested in attending or, or a portion of that conference, please look at our office now. And financial statements. Well, today is the due date, May first. And thank you for all helping us achieve that goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brings us to the zoning. I saw Mackenzie Stover and her baby today, but she's not here tonight.
And we don't have a report to, to drive to you tonight either for zoning or recreation?
Seals for Municipal Party, there's no report there. And Esra, there are minutes in the packet from their March fifteenth meeting. And next is Northeastern Snyder County Joyard Authority. I think there is no report for that. This brings us to new businesses or any new business to come for council from the council members. There are none. Any new business from the mayor? Second comment here. Any comment for members of the public before we go into our executive session? All right, time is eight oh nine. We're going to adjourn into executive session, and we will return. I don't anticipate any action being taken after we return.
It's purposeful litigation.
Oh, for first litigation discussion. Time is eight fifty-four. We're back in session. We took action in the executive session. Any further business to come before the council?
Can the DHL Fireman's Relief have an executive session with the council?
I'm sorry?
Can the DHL Fireman's Relief have a short executive session with the council?
If we go in with you, then it's, it's no longer executive session. The executive session only consists of members of council.
How do you guys want?
If I could offer something, why don't you adjourn your meeting? I'll turn off the camera and just go home and just all trust Mr. Kravitz that you're not going to conduct any official business? any official business? And then it's, you know, then it's effectively the sixth session.
Just dive a few minutes.
If you'll all agree to stick around and speak with the gentleman for a little bit?
Well, I think we're gonna make a motion right now that we authorize the Public Safety Committee to meet with representatives with Penn Township or council, or Public Safety Committee from the council and representatives from the DHL. Is that okay to?
Well, it's
You can meet with the committee then.
What's that?
You can meet with the committee then.
You gotta do that? Okay.
All right, so, yes, I make the motion that we authorize the Public Safety Committee from Borough Council to meet with Penn Township representatives and representatives from DHL to discuss.
Like that, the relief, Jason?
What's that?
The relief association.
Yeah, the Relief Association, not DHL. The DHL
There's two separate entities within the
You could both.
To meet, to meet with both of them?
And it's all representative, or it's on both sides or whatever you have for that.
May I say something else, sir?
Let's see if we have a second question.
Yeah, we'll leave that first.
I'll second.
Move in second. I'm working for discussion on a motion. Could you add something?
My only statement to that is, is if you meet with both the fire company and the relief association at the same time, they're gonna bring the board member or the entire crew, the racetrack crew, the past life members that they've been using to sack the meeting against the active individuals, which is the relief, and you won't get our chair still here.
Well, it's my understanding that we would hear out everybody, and that we don't have the power to make decisions in that aspect anyway. So, it would be here for that specific purpose. It would be here, all parties, their side of the story, just so we have background information.
Mr. Carroll?
We would like to come to a resolution, but if people were saying, there's no way the line's drawn in the sand. It can get ugly.
We've all been getting down.
We've tried, when this first came to light, we actually tried to mediate by limiting suspensions to certain individuals depending on what we thought their severity was. And the outcome, as Mr. Krabitz knows, is the board that was overseeing that got removed last meeting, and we have nothing as far as us to stand on to combat what they're doing. They returned all suspensions, all punishments, everything's been removed. So, we're at this point now because we have nothing else. We have the voting power, we have nothing with them.
But in this, in this meeting, or however you want to call it, it is, it will be here, all sides.
Mr. Carroll?
I guess I'm gonna refer back to the solicitor to mediate this as we get into. Is there an issue that, because they don't want confrontation to de-escalate, can there be a time to convene these gentlemen on the association and then have a public meeting together, all of them, so that you can hear one side?
Whatever company wants to set it up, they can do how they want to. They want to meet
I know what you're trying to do. You're trying to get our attention to what you've gone through, and then have their attention to what they want us to do. So, when we set up the time and date, if we can get that, and getting both Penn Townships, which is affecting you, and now us, to maybe have a meeting with you, the association, and then the fire company, and then collectively, you know, do it all together.
Question. Why don't, we're gonna send three council members, why don't we limit it to three members of the Fireman's Relief and three members or, or four members or something? Because we don't want 20 people showing up from each side of the issue, but we're sending three people.
The other thing is, I don't know if that's what, if that would be enough, that you could send your representatives.
We could send the relief officers. At this point, Penn Township requested a relief association to come to their meeting Wednesday night. They're ready, they're ready to make a drastic move. I don't know what it's gonna be, but they request us to come this Wednesday night to their meeting. They're very concerned about public safety, and they're gonna make a drastic move.
And as you well know, this is going to be in the paper tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay. You know this is going to be the breaking of DHL or not?
It's on video now.
Yeah, he's streaming this.
No, it's not, it's not live, because you guys didn't want to give the library any more money to beef up the internet.
So, what I'm saying is, it's gonna move very quickly, and it's gonna get a lot of outrage from the public when they read this in the paper tomorrow. That's why I urge you guys to set aside things and make sure that there's firefighters out there protecting our citizens without being an issue. And this is gonna, this is gonna be a step all the way across the board, fellas. And the bottom line is gonna be the money. The money's gonna hurt DHL. You're drawing money from the public, and when they hear this kind of stuff, they say, why? You know?
Pete?
Yeah.
As Attorney Krabitz could vouch for, I'm sure, for us, we've tried every avenue we could possibly try. We met with Paul Williams in his office. We've exhausted all of our avenues to the point where some of us feel that our safety is in jeopardy with these people running it. They wouldn't let us purchase new helmets. They fought us every step of the way on anything and everything. They took our right to vote away. It's beyond, it's beyond, hey, this is where the borough needs to step in, and the township needs to step in, and if they have to provide fire service, they might have to get it somewhere else, because I'm not jeopardizing myself or my son, and I don't want to see any of these guys get hurt. And that's to the point it's at. It's beyond that part of it, unfortunately.
And we're getting phone calls, and I did, and some of you have approached me on the side and said, what can I do? And so, I started making phone calls and trying to find out what can we do. Well, there's not a whole lot we can do. Do you know what we can do? And I've already said to the public? Just ban them. Go hire someone at the fire company, or put it up for sale and say, we want other people coming here. We don't want to do that, okay? We don't want that. But we want it resolved, and I think Tim's got a point. And I'm asking you as the association, Jason, can three members be enough to sort of give us some feedback?
Or maybe five?
Five? Tim?
I don't
I know what's gonna happen. Because everybody, everybody here wants to get heard, and we can't get anything accomplished.
It's gotta be a working meeting.
I mean, basically, the Fireman's Relief Association, you have a president, a vice president, a secretary, a treasurer. We have four officers. But, you know, the actual relief association is comprised of all the active firefighters, which controls all the funding, which, and that's something else that the auditor general in the report is, you know, the decision the borough's gonna have to soon make is what they're gonna do with the relief funding that's gonna come out here in just a few short months. You know, I know Penn Township is, they're seriously looking, giving it to somebody else.
So, basically, if your whole association could have a meeting with the Penn Township and three members of council and the solicitor to hear that information, is that okay?
As long as we get a township, townships, the way they get, yeah, as long as, whatever the township wants, I mean, they, that's, I know as they said, they were contacting Paul, and they were waiting to hear back, I guess.
I guess they say after this, this, tonight's meeting? So, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna just go forward on that, and then we'll do that, and then we'll have a meeting with the firefighters, and then maybe have it a, you know, a full meeting, a long meeting with everybody to try to get it worked out.
But we want to amend the motion to put a limit on the number, up to five from you made the motion. If we end up with 30 people in there, we might as well not even show up, because it's just gonna
Tim said too, this way you have, like, you don't have 10 on one side and three of the other guys show up, and it just keeps it fair.
So, I'll amend my motion that we, a motion to authorize the Public Safety Committee to meet with representative of Penn Township, representative from DHL, all sectors of that, and their representatives.
Relief Association.
Well, all aspects of DHL.
Okay, all right, all right. Up to five members each?
Thank you for making your motion for me, but yes.
I'll second that motion.
I'm seconding. Other discussion on the motion? All in
I want to remind my elected leadership and the mayor that Seale's Grove has the Central Susquehanna Valley Mediation Center, a group of extremely well-trained, well-versed, and trusted by the courts mediators who could potentially be a completely neutral third party from somewhere else in the Susquehanna Valley and deals with these types of high-stress situations on a regular basis, and located in the borough, and free.
Thank you. It's a good thought. There is urgency, I'll take the vote. But I will say, there is urgency, and this council is gonna take action of some kind at this next meeting. So, all in favor of this motion, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carroll. Any other motions to come before council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Counsel.
All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Your adjourn.
Thanks, thank you everyone.
Paul?